Okay, it's your story, but can I say something before we start?
Sure, sure.
Just FYI, oh my gosh, just FYI, when we sit down, all of these mics are amplified to the new TV that were, it's just set up last week, but IT still has to come out because there's a little bit of static feedback.
Oh, I heard that over there.
So if you, if you, if you can, please just kind of keep a little distance when you're talking, but it's all recording and amplified at the same time.
Are we live streaming?
Not yet.
Not yet, Dave, it's gonna be part of it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're waiting to get the hookup for team meetings and remote for telecom, if, if a board member can't make it and they're allowed to remote in, they'll be able to be on the screen and to be talking.
Okay. So it being six thirty on Thursday, April third, twenty twenty five, I would like to call the order to Daze's planning and zoning historic commission. Franco, can you take the role?
Commissioner Kruger is absent. Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Reyes Braeger is absent. Commissioner Myers?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Chair Brunner?
Here.
Okay, quorum has been met, so we can move on to our first order of business, which is the approval of minutes. I may have a motion to approve the minutes as included in the packet.
I'll move to it for the minutes.
Second. Okay, are any comments, revisions required for the minutes? Hearing none.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Chair Brunner?
Yes. Okay, moving on to the next item, public comment. Is there anyone in the audience looking to make a comment on an agenda or non-agenda item today? Seeing none, moving on to our first order of new business. Actually, would we like to move?
Sure.
Seeing how we have a petitioner present here, would the board be, the commission be in favor of moving their item to the first order of business?
Yes.
This would be item number one in other business?
I'll make a motion that we amend our agenda to take the next item to be heard as other business, number one. Continued consideration of the certificate of appropriateness regarding Foxy's Hideaway located at three nineteen Meyer Street.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Chair Brunner?
Yes. Okay, so.
Good evening, everybody. I'll take this.
Okay.
I was gonna ask, I was like, where is a piece of trex?
That really blends in well with our podium.
Doesn't it look nice? I got a guy, you can put it anywhere you want.
Yeah.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Joe Condo and Anna Condo from Foxy's. Back to our original petition of doing a Trex-type material, right Franco? It's not Trex. It's a composite, composite material. Uh, we've just come back with a few bids on this project and it is astonishing how expensive this twenty-foot ramp is going to be. So moving forward, we're looking at a concrete, which I'm looking for tomorrow, we're having a bid on that. And then doing a wood, also a wood deck and staircase with also the same type of metal railing to be incongruent with that project. So we're looking to actually extend it for approval on these other two options that we're gonna bring to the board.
Oh, okay, so, so what we have in our packets just the?
Correct.
Okay, and then the concrete was what you talked about the last time?
Yes, but this is the one that we talked about last time, that would be probably the best option as far as durability, uh, clean, uh, the clean look of it.
Yeah.
Uh, but to us, the, the cost is very prohibiting. It's, they wanted over thirteen thousand dollars and I got this for multiple bids on this.
For the Trex?
Just for the Trex or the Trex material, because there's different, there's different ones. Like a post alone is a hundred and twenty dollars and we need fifteen of them.
Right.
The, the hardware to fasten them are fifty dollars a box and we probably need fifteen boxes. To, to put this together as opposed to doing concrete, which obviously, you know all con- what all concrete entails, the rebar, the footings and things like that. Um, also with a deck, a decking material of wood or a cedar or something that would be either stainable or paintable to the village's discretion and approval of whatever color or stain color that we choose on that as well.
Okay, so, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm a little like confused on what's then really being asked for today. Is it like all three again?
Well, to not, to eighty-six, this, this one is out.
Okay.
Budget-wise, it's just not feasible. Um, and then to look at the other two options being a wo- a natural wood material and metal railing as well as concrete with also a metal railing on it as well.
Yeah, and do you have a preference on either of those right now?
Whatever the best cost is gonna be.
Yeah, well, I knew you also didn't want the concrete because you were gonna tear it out, is that?
Well, we didn't know because of the patio expansion as well, so technically, I mean, obviously, we'd be leaning more toward wood, but also to get a concrete bid would just be our doing our due diligence.
So for the, um, the wood one, it would look like this Trex one pretty much identical, just be wood and?
Exactly, either stained or painted.
Okay.
Depending on what the board and the village approves.
Okay, okay.
Would you, would you cons- and I, I apologize, I was not at the last meeting, so I do have a question on, on the drawing, but, um, uh, are you, would you be opposed to just, I'm sure the least expensive option, because I do a lot of construction projects, is gonna be your pressure-treated lumber. That, that's gonna be the least expen- I mean, you could go less expensive by just doing like a, a wood, a yellow, a yellow wood plank, but that's gonna eventually rot or whatever.
Torn up in a year.
Uh, but the, uh, are you? I, I take an, I take some issue with paint or stain, especially on decking material, because as the decking material weathers, to me, that would be more of a historic look, just the weathered, pressure-treated lumber. The paint and stained, or stain and paint, um, it's great when it's new, but if it starts chipping and depending on what, if you use a transparent stain, then that's not gonna chip, but if you use a solid stain, that's essentially paint.
Correct.
And then that starts chipping, then, then it just looks.
It needs a lot of maintenance.
A lot of maintenance and I don't think it looks good. Um, what I was confused on, where on the building is the fence gonna come, is this gonna go on the north side of the building?
Yes.
Okay, so the fence for Diamond Jim's is going to move back further to the north?
It's not on Diamond Jim's.
No, this is on Foxy's, right, so the one that was Scott's.
Do you have that picture, Franco?
Yeah, yeah.
And then, and then the, the deck goes to the back, this, the ramp goes to the back.
Okay, I, I thought Diamond Jim's fence came all the way up to the edge of the building.
In the back?
No, on the north side, on the north side of the building.
They have a patio.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, that, that's part of theirs? Oh, okay, I thought that was part of Diamond Jim's.
Yeah, this is, this is nice.
It is nice.
This is great.
Yeah.
I saw the drawing in the packet, but I couldn't tell which.
So there's the, and then it's gonna be a photo.
Yeah, they have.
There it is. Oh, I didn't see that.
There they are.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, yeah.
So then we're talking about from this door here.
Yes, there is, but it's, it's like where the wood is.
Yeah, so there'd be a staircase that would come out here per the drawing, the stairs spilling down onto the patio, and then the ramp would go to the west, down to here.
To the door, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So the door's gonna be relocated over here, because the ramp's gonna carry past that due to the rise and run of the ramp and leave a five-foot, uh, uh, clearing or a landing there via ADA compliance.
Okay.
So this door is gonna move down here and then the ramp will continue from here down to ground level there. And then it'll be a railing on this side, coming down the stairs, a railing up the stairs and then running the length of the ramp on the north side as well as the south side of the ramp, because there, as you see in the drawing, you have this gutter, so we will have like an eight-inch, uh, gap between the ramp and the building before it ties back in to the door.
Okay. Okay, so, um, was everyone else here last time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's here, okay. So, any other than questions on this one?
No, they're gonna come back to us, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll just come back?
A natural color, a natural, natural color on the wood, a transparent stain with a polyurethane, which will all be in the, the proposed packet.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, would we want to entertain approving it with those restrictions, so they don't have to come back, or do we want them to come back with that?
If he's not gonna paint it colors, I don't see a reason why.
Yeah, it would have been a natural color, it wouldn't be like a red or a blue.
You're giving him permission for the concrete and the, the wood.
Yeah, would we now, that'd be for the wood, do we, I, I, I think we're good on the wood.
Okay.
Right, now, the concrete, we talked about last time.
Yeah, being a permanent structure, then be inhibiting us on an expansion of taking, going on to that is extending this roof line here
Yeah.
to this area probably to cover the door and then extend out this way to the property line to this fence line.
Yeah, and that, that would be that future development.
Yeah, so that's why we didn't wanna go with concrete, because we didn't know how far we were gonna take this, this line here to then have to put pillars in, tear core through concrete and things of that nature, so to have a non-permanent structure there.
So, so how about we then do the, maybe do the certificate of appropriateness on the wood?
Okay.
And then if you guys do the wood, then you're good to go. If you find the wood doesn't work, you need to come back with the concrete, you come back with the concrete.
Sounds great.
Okay, then I think hopefully saves the meeting for you.
That sounds very agreeable.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yep, good with that.
Okay, so may I have a motion then to grant a certificate of appropriateness, given the outlines in the debt and the packet with a, the replacement of Trex with natural stained or poli- clear stained or polyurethaned?
Pressure-treated.
Pressure-treated wood.
So who?
I'll second.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
And Chair Brunner?
Yes. Great.
Thank you all, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Do you wanna keep it?
I don't need some patches.
Yeah, there you go. Keep it as a trophy.
Oh no, I'll use it.
There you go. It's really nice.
It's old right here.
Okay, then, uh, moving on to our next item of business, so this is the consideration of a certificate of appropriateness regarding the village-owned privacy fence to be located at three oh four Hill Street and three oh nine Jackson Street. So this is, yeah.
I'll pull it up.
Yeah, pull it up. So this is being approved, I mean, being petitioned by the, uh, the village, um, and it's a follow-up to the variance hearing that we had in March about having a slightly larger fence, uh, in terms of height than our ordinance would allow.
Franco, can I ask why this is even needed? It's not in the historic district.
So the portion of the fence that's being installed, maybe like five feet, is on three oh four Hill.
Oh, it is, okay.
Which is the historic district and like you said, the surface lot isn't, but better be safe than sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, like Chair said, uh, the PZHC recommended variance for the board to approve, the two-foot height, uh, permission for an eight-foot privacy fence. The board did approve that privacy fence, so, um, variance, so now I'm here before you asking for permission on the Trex fence again. Uh, composite material, of course, it is a seclusion style with the vertical, uh, posts like this, and this is the color. It's called Winchester gray, and you can see the other colors that are option in Trex seclusions that we had to choose from. We feel that Winchester gray is, uh, a good earth tone. It's not gonna be, um, this color right away, it takes about a year for it to fade to look like this.
Start starter.
Yeah, so.
And Franco, do you know, do the, are the posts, are they four by four and then they're sleeved?
Yeah, they're hollow metal.
Okay.
So concrete gets inside of it.
Okay, okay.
That's a solid.
They've got these all over Florida, but they don't have the solid posts inside.
They just cover it.
And, uh, it, no, they, they did, they just put some type of PVC post in the ground and every time there's a hurricane winds of eighty miles an hour, it knocks them all over.
Yeah.
So this, okay.
So as you, as you may or may not know, fence posts have to be about forty-two inches, but I did ask his company that because it's a foot fence, we'd like it forty-eight inches deep in concrete.
Okay, so those are like a hollow steel post that get driven into the?
Correct.
Driven into the?
So, so concrete's gonna be?
And then concrete poured inside?
Oh, it's gonna be, the concrete's gonna be poured and then they're gonna put the?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Concrete for the, uh, okay.
And they're gonna mix the concrete on site.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, it looks like, you know, it follows our, kinda one of our color guidelines too.
I did, I did share this with the two neighbors that are directly behind it, those two residents, and I didn't get any feedback, they said, thanks, let me know when it's ready, because I wanna start my planting.
Okay.
Let me know when these people will be out to install.
All right, there it is. Okay, yeah, any questions, comments on this?
I think it looks nice.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the certificate of appropriateness, uh, for the village-owned privacy fence to be located at three oh four Hill and three oh nine Jackson Street as presented. Second, I'll second there.
I got two, I heard Myers first.
I heard, yeah, I heard three.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes.
Chair Brunner?
Yes. Okay, yeah, and now on to our final, uh, bit of business, the continued, uh, well, I guess it's the consideration of a motion to recommend approval of the historic district guidelines to the village board. So, uh, I know I provided some feedback, um, did anybody else provide feedback, Franco?
No.
Okay.
So I was, um, I can address each of your points.
Okay.
I wasn't, um, you know, Mr. I have to go, this was from the last meeting.
Yeah. Okay.
I wasn't really getting a jury.
Steve brought his feedback the last time.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, thank you for having me come back, um, for this, um, follow-up meeting. Um, were there any other comments before I address Chair Brunner's?
I, I have a few, but?
Yeah.
Well, the, the one is just that, um, it seems overly cumbersome, uh, in that the amount, the amount of, of restrictions and things, things of that nature and, uh, I just wonder, I mean, staff is prepared to have to go through all of this every time somebody comes before us for a certificate of appropriateness. The other question would be is it has to do with the signage. It, early on, it lays out the legal description for the historic district. There's a, there's a meets and bounds legal description that describes the district. It then, um, goes on to show maps of the historic district and that, but on the signage, there was a clause that said, if you have a, a structure or a building that's over a hundred years old, even if you're outside of the historic district, but within the village, you still have to comply with the historic district regulations, and maybe that's just for the signage, but to me, it seemed ambiguous, but I guess the question is, is we've got a legal description in there describing our historic district, but yet now we're gonna include any other structure outside of the historic district within the village when it comes to, to signage, and I don't necessarily know that I'm opposed to it, my fear is that if we get challenged is, if I was an attorney, I'd come in and say, well, you've given the legal description of where the historic district is, our building is clearly outside of that, why, why do we have to comply with these?
It's a good point. Um, so then you said that point, that clause was in the, the draft district guidelines?
It was in the, in the draft district guidelines. But I believe it was pertaining to signage only.
Okay.
I, yeah, I'm, I'm looking for a hundred, I don't see a hundred years old referenced anywhere.
I'll take a look.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 I, I missed it, I didn't.
And, and, and again, I don't know that I'm opposed to it, it was just more, if, the one thing that I'm hoping with all of these guidelines and, and all the different things is that I don't know that we've ever before had any real teeth to sink into anybody, I mean, I, I know this goes back fifteen years ago, the gentleman that used to own Catfish Club or Rosie O'Hairs, he just did whatever he wanted because there were no, there, there was, there was nothing backing the historic district guidelines that anybody could, uh, really, uh, put their finger on, so the attorneys just never bothered to take him to court because they knew that they'd lose.
Yeah, well, they're not in the historic district, right?
Yeah.
But yeah, yeah, still, um, yeah, and that's, was Tom, right?
Tom.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I definitely, if there is something that's referencing stuff outside of the historic district.
There is.
There is?
Yeah, it's the third paragraph in the signage section, it's anything, um, prior to nineteen hundred, even if it's outside the historic.
What section number or page number?
Thirty-seven.
Page thirty-seven, okay.
Yeah.
I think that's in the code.
Either side of the?
From our code.
That could be, yeah.
It's from our code.
Okay.
So then that would have to be an amendment to your?
It would have to be a code amendment that we, that we could bring forth.
Sure, sure. Okay.
Yeah, well, then, I mean, that's, if it's in the code, then I'm, I mean, I didn't want it to come in here, with this being a historic district guidelines, but if we call it out in the historic section in general.
Sure.
Um, yeah.
Okay.
No, that's good.
Thank you.
Great, any other thoughts?
Five, it's a hundred and twenty, yeah. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, so we can, you have my list?
Yeah, I have it pulled up on my phone. Um, so you had, I think, half a dozen, I'll go point by point and then a response to each, so first one was section two dash two dash two dash one, um, approvals, so there's basically a section says that certain things can go, get approved through the zoning administrator only and not through you as a commission, and Chair Brunner brought up the point that he would prefer that the commission has a look at it and then the zoning administrator. I, I, I would agree with that, I think the reason why, um, this is a pretty standard thing is in larger cities, designing administrator tends to have a lot more purview, um, and oftentimes those plan commissions would prefer that it goes to the administrator, uh, only because then it, it's less burden on them. But you as a smaller community, um, and you also have the purview, um, to, to recommend that you would like a chance to review it first or have a chance to review in addition to the administrator.
So the reason I primarily brought this up is the way we're set up right now, if something is granted, it's granting, done, right? So if the administrator could grant it, there's nothing the, the village can do about it. So I didn't like that, there, that's a lot of power to be right there, that's why I want, we don't really like a review.
Yeah.
I mean, we did, you know, like I said, the options I said, it could maybe bypass us and go to like consent agenda on the board, so the board could just toss it out or it would go in like a, a separate like, you know, consent agenda more or less for us, where we wouldn't even discuss it, we could review it in a packet.
And this would be anything within the, within the historic district? Because I, I, I guess, I, the last thing I would wanna do would be to hinder or to, uh, hold up a business from opening or doing whatever they wanna do, so if, I, I mean, if, if it's?
So it would be, we wouldn't just grant certificates of appropriateness, so if they said they don't need one, that's the other option I said, like, they could issue a waiver that we could revoke.
Okay.
You know, whoa, 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 that wasn't what, what we talked about, right? Something like that, but yeah, yeah, I think that's aligned with what, because he already has discretion on what, in the building, you know, our building inspector has discretion on what counts.
What counts and what doesn't.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so what I don't like is that we, it was issue a certificate of appropriateness, which has a legal meaning in our, that we can't revoke.
Okay.
Or I don't know how we can revoke them, I think they actually have to make another change to invalidate it.
Well, I would think if they didn't get a certificate of appropriateness, if, if it was just staff granted, I would think that would be subject to, to review now.
Yeah.
Petitioner may wanna sue the village, hey, you told me I could, staff told me I could do it, but yet the board or the, somebody else is telling me I can't, so that could invoke some type of a, a risk or a liable lawsuit.
I would agree with that change, that just, it shouldn't be staff, it should be the PZHC.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, that's a good change.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
No, I mean, it, it makes, it's past practice, it's what the village has done, it, I understand some cities do that, where they're large and they have, uh, ordinances. Well, these aren't gonna be adopted in ordinance unless the board wants to, so that discretion is pretty heavy, so I would agree that it should fall with the PZHC.
Okay, great. Uh, point two is section three dash four dash six dash eleven, this is about, um, bulb types, um, favoring incandescent bulbs. Uh, Chair Brunner's comment was he had more, he's more concerned about color temperature than having, than, rather than whether or not it's an incandescent, so like LEDs would be appropriate. We actually, the actual section does say LEDs are, are also acceptable, but to specifically call out incandescent, we can remove that kind of focus on incandescent.
I'd be okay with like filament, I think if that's what you're getting at, more to the look.
Yeah.
Um, like a filament bulb.
Sure.
With a color, you know, but incandescent color temperature, not bright blue, you know?
Okay. Yeah, yeah, it's a fair.
And general thoughts on that, I mean, you got it, yeah, I think we wanna get rid of incandescent bulbs in general, right?
Okay, uh, third point was three, three dash six dash four dash two, this is about vestibules, um, that can be allowed to be open between October and March. Chair Brunner had recommended opening at least through April fifteenth, is that just because of?
Well, I said at least through March.
Yeah.
I said through March, I think it should be through March.
And I don't have any problem with it, whatever.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that section?
Uh, three, six, four, two?
Thank you.
And then I, I even said maybe April fifteenth, because that's like our average last day of snow, I mean, it's still cold in April. You know, just thinking of the, the places, and what might count as vestibules, you know, like, they'll keep at Aliana's, they'll keep the doors up on that until, usually until May.
Until May, yeah.
Um, you know, it's until it's nice enough to eat outside.
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
What's for lunch?
Yeah, I don't, so I, what, what do you guys think on the date?
I think through April.
Through April?
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's nice before that, they're gonna come down anyway, so, yeah.
Yeah, through April then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, it's snowed in the middle of May before, not that it's stopped, but it's snow, I mean, I, I guess to me, I would just wouldn't want it to interfere with any of our outdoor summer activities, so I don't know if it's easier to say they're just prohibited in June, July and August.
Yeah, well, and then the other thing is, is they'll, they would, even, even without this, I think they would hit our like temporary structure rules, like you can't have a tent up for?
For, for so long.
Right, you know, we, we, we have that, um, I think the most is actually like a hundred and eighty days, actually. So I'd give like six months.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Great, because yeah, I think if they went until, if they went farther, we'd say, hey, you know? Okay, yeah.
Okay, uh, the next two points are relate to section six dash two, these are about prohibited signs or things that the sign code prohibits. Uh, the first of the two is, uh, flags are mentioned as not being allowed, and Chair Brunner mentioned, does this include things like willow and birches open sign? So I went back into your sign code, um, every, in, in every zoning district, each property is allowed two sign, or two flags, one, one of which would have to be an American flag if they have two sign, uh, two flags, and the other one can be a flag of any type. So, with that being said, I think it probably makes sense not to say that they're, they're not, they're not allowed, so just basically take out flags as a listing as not being allowed, because your zoning code actually allows them, so, or your sign code allows them.
So what, what are you saying to change this then?
So right now, um, flags are listed under prohibited items that are not allowed in the historic district, um, but your sign code says every, in any district, any, any property can have up to two, two flags.
Okay, so you're just gonna strike it?
Just strike it, yeah, altogether.
Yeah.
So, and?
Are, are banners allowed temporarily?
Uh, temporary banners, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like randomly, you know, on a post, they're holding a flag every day?
Yeah, and I think the reason why that's typical in a historic district Yeah, and I think the reason why that's typical in a historic district is, like in a historic district that's mainly residential, people don't like flags, except if it's an American flag or a state flag. So I think that's why, that is kind of a standard, but the fact that your sign code does allow it, I don't think we should supersede that.
Yeah, okay.
And then the second point, under six dash two, is about holiday or string lights. And then Chair Brunner's comment was village light strings and trees, lights above patios such as East Side Cafe. I don't mind these if done tastefully in certain locations. So right now, similar to the flags, these are not allowed under the, the historic district guidelines, but your sign code doesn't really mention string lights. So this is more of a discussion now with you all is, do you want to continue, do you want to allow them or not allow string lights?
Well, we clearly like string lights in our trees.
Yeah.
All year.
All year. I mean, that, that's, I think, something we think's charming about our town.
Sure.
So, you know, people had a lot of things to say, well, we could have green ones instead of white ones. So I, I, I mean, we definitely want them there. And then I know, like, when I say the string lights, I don't know maybe you've really looked at, you know, at East Side right now, but they have them, you know, zigzagging back and forth on posts. I mean, that, to me, is also string light, right? So, you know, and I actually can think of back in the old days where they first electrifying things, they're like, you know, have legs on, you know, that's how they lit things up. Yeah, they tend to be on, yeah, they just like put them on posts and strung up, all big old, old lamps. I mean, I can see how it could look bad if someone, you know, went, you know, someone can make it look bad.
Somebody can make it look bad.
Yeah, but.
We want to prevent, you know, somebody doing white Christmas lights, like little ones, right? We, we're looking for cafe-style lighting.
Yeah.
How, how do we?
Yeah, what do you guys think on that?
And I also don't want somebody coming in and seeking approval to hang lights.
Because if we say no, it's like, you know, does that mean Christmas going around and like yelling at people about Christmas lights or out of season, even though that we got them up on our trees? You know, like they put them on, I mean.
I don't see it really being a problem. I, I think it looks nice.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'd be okay not, more than likely.
Yeah, well, no, my, my only thing would be is that if the lights get into a state of disrepair where.
Yeah.
Where a third of them are burnt out or not working or whatever.
Yeah.
That there'd be some teeth or something that we'd be able to enforce that.
Yeah. Well, let's look at, I mean, we can look at it this way, it just hasn't been a problem yet.
Yeah.
I mean, this has never been something people thought of, so.
And, and we always have, or the village always has the ability from a safety standpoint, like, I mean, if the lights start drooping down to the point where somebody could hit their head on them or whatever, I mean, I think some common sense rules would, would always apply regardless of what the guidelines say.
Yeah, so do we want to just strengthen the stuff on string lights? Do we want to do something?
Reading it, they'd be able to have any kind of color that they want.
Yeah. I, yeah.
Do you want?
I, I, I'm going with like, you know, it hasn't been a problem, right? Like.
But I mean, the, yeah. But why, but I wondered, do you say from mid-November to mid-January?
We can do whatever.
You can do whatever, but the rest of the year, it has to be white?
White?
That's not, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not.
Okay, yeah, okay.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, yeah, yes. And we already have the thing for the holiday lights in there, right? A window?
Yeah, from November fifteenth to January fifteenth.
So it's mid-November to mid-January?
They wanna have green.
Yeah, so it has to be white?
If they do it for one day.
Yeah.
Then they get the notice that they can't have.
It'll be gone.
Okay. So, yeah, let's say something with clear year-round.
Yeah, white or clear.
White or clear.
Yeah. So you put up just a multi-color string? It's a multi-color string, you can change it with the remotes.
A lot of red light fixtures.
Yeah, they make those, yeah. You can have any color you want.
It's like Christmas trees, yeah.
Okay, and that was the last one?
The last one is about, it's six dash five dash one, about the two hundred lumens per bulb on exposed bulb lighting. Chair Brunner thought this seemed, two hundred lumens is equivalent to roughly twenty-five watt incandescent light bulb, seems weak. So I had to look it up, because I was like, I don't even know what two hundred lumens actually looks like. So I, I consulted a couple of resources. So at two hundred lumens, the illumination level falls into the category of low or moderate brightness. That means that a two hundred lumen light source is perfect for creating a cozy and intimate ambiance in small spaces like bedrooms, reading corners, or dining areas. Obviously, that's an inside.
Yeah.
So it, for where this section is referencing, it's referencing signs, not like a street light, but like if you had like a sign on, on the, on the, on the wall, and you had like a goose light, neck, a goose neck light.
Yeah.
The maximum brightness could be two hundred lumens. I actually looked at, people are recommending, or some resource said you could bump it about four fifty.
Yeah.
And it, it'd be bright enough where it's bright enough, brighter than two hundred lumens, obviously, it's more than double, but not so bright where it has a lot of spillover effect and too glaring, too glaring or anything.
Yeah, I buy like thirteen hundred lumen bulbs for my house. I'm like, yeah, okay.
So.
So it is.
It's just a number.
Yeah.
Do you want to, do you wanna keep it at two hundred, or do you wanna bump it up to like five hundred?
Exposed bulb lighting outside. Two hundred lumens.
Oh, is the max?
Yeah, two hundred lumens.
But you could also have like three, three two hundred lumen light bulbs going on a sign, so you're basically having six hundred lumens on that sign.
I mean.
So it's per light source.
It's hard to find twenty-five watt bulbs.
Right, right.
I mean, it's like a nightlight, a big nightlight.
I, I mean, I, I don't know why we'd wanna limit anything under fifteen hundred lumens. I mean, I'd rather see one goose neck lighting a sign than three, with three dim bulbs.
Yeah.
Now, and, and depending on how far their goose neck is sticking away in that.
Yeah, I think for something like this, it would, with that low, it would have to be like signs almost at eye level.
Yeah.
Like if you had an address sign outside.
A goose neck is typically gonna be a screw-in bulb. And, I mean, I don't, if you got a true, like a floodlight that would go into a thing, I don't think that they make a floodlight that's under seventy-five watt. If, when you go back to the incandescent.
Yeah, yeah.
A seventy-five watt floodlight, I think, is the lowest you can find. Now, I don't know what a seventy-five watt, I mean, I could ask Google what a seventy-five watt translates in the lumens, but.
I mean, twenty-five is roughly two hundred, so it'd be six hundred.
Six hundred.
Yeah.
Well, but that's a twenty-five watt incandescent.
Yeah, that's, no, it's another, yeah, some other, just filament.
Okay.
Not LED.
Yeah.
It would be like a half a watt LED.
Yeah. I mean, I, I would be supportive of fifteen hundred or less.
As a max.
So, I mean, unless this is like for, like I said, there's no way you're doing two hundred lumen lights for like big signs on buildings. It's just, this has to be for something close.
Yeah, like a McDonald's sign that's interminably illuminated and.
Oh, well, no, we have big goose necks, like on the second floor of buildings lighting up signs.
Okay.
Those are gonna be much, much brighter than two hundred lumens. They, and that's what you would expect, light up a big sign, you know, where the, the fixtures can be eight feet away from the sign. But, so when I read this, I was thinking it'd be like for, like I said, like if you had a, a menu on the side of your restaurant and you wanted to light it up, that'd be a twenty-five watt, a two hundred lumen bulb. That would make sense for that, so you don't have like a blaring light, like right at eye level.
Like blaring into the street.
Spotlight at eye level, when walking down the street would be to aggravate, you know, like, so, but anyway, I think, I, again, I don't, do we, do we wanna change the number or do we, do we wanna just say this is, does, do you think it covers the ones that are high in the air? Does this cover anything that's an exposed bulb?
I hadn't done a study of your, of the lights, lights around here, but.
Do you see anything else in other towns that you've worked with?
Aurora's, I think there's just two hundred, but they have so much like ambient street lights that.
Play out the city lights.
Yeah.